Call a meeting to order, the pledge of allegiance. You rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, is your own communication or did you do that not?
Pardon me?
Your own communication.
Roll call, please.
Sorry, I'm confused.
Yeah, I got you.
Okay, roll call Chairman Glass.
Here.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Here.
Commissioner Stae.
Here.
Commissioner Putnam.
Here.
Commissioner Romero.
Present.
Do you want to call?
Okay, oral communication, if anyone has anything that they'd like to say that we are not covering in the meeting tonight, now would be the time to do it, if we are covering.
Yes, George McCormick, lived at 1341 Playa Zool, I'd just like to read a brief letter from one of the Avalon resident, it was apparently sent to the city council, according to the June 2019 planning commission staff report, there were 339 short-term rental units reporting TOT, actually they were data during with those, including those with zero payments, currently we have 363 short-term rental units and more may be approved tonight, and we have four more, yeah, four more on the agenda this week, assuming that the PC will approve all of these TRLs, which is the usual way that things are voted, we will then have to add an increase of 28 TRLs in the past four years, this boils down to 24.3% of our total residential units, however, if we include the currently banked CUPs or without business licenses, we are at 27.5%, it also reveals that there was a 7.6% increase in vacation rentals in the last four years, I explained this, according to the person who wrote this letter, that to you, to argue the statement that we have not increased the number of vacation rentals in the 40 years, a statement made at the last meeting by one of the commissioners, we most definitely have had an increase in the number of vacation rental units and it needs to be stopped, I encourage you to find a percentage cap below the current amount, slowly reducing the number of vacation rentals and stick to it in the future, for the future of Avalon, thank you for listening and dedicating your time to Avalon, I should point out, comment to this letter that of those 339 units reported in June 2019, 51 were inactive, so the number, that means only 288 were active, so the number might actually be higher, and I believe many of the commissioners, or several commissioners were on this here in June 2019 and knew of that report, so they should know that there was an increase in this period of time, so, thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
Anybody else? Okay.
Excuse me, Chairman Glass.
Yes, sir.
Would you mind if we allow Scott to introduce himself, just because usually his voice is in the air, but he's not physically present.
This is the mystery man, we would love you.
So there he is, just, thank you.
Hi, it's nice to meet you all, I'm Scott Chapises from the city attorney's office, yeah, the, nothing other than now I'm here physically before you, so, that's it.
Welcome to the island.
Yeah.
In case those of you who are wondering.
Yeah, why we didn't have the voice of God from.
It's just me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any items on the consent calendar? Minutes.
I make a motion to approve the, what was the date?
July 19th.
July 19th. Minutes.
Second. Second by Eric.
Okay, we'll do roll call, Chairman Glass.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Commissioner Stae.
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Aye.
So that's all ayes. Thank you.
Okay, item number two, the site plan review and variance, this is 86 Sol Vista.
Great. Good evening Chair and Commissioners, Kelly Robeppo from State Trust Planning presenting, this item before you is a site plan review and a variance to excavate under an existing single-family residence condo in the Sol Vista development to create a new 372 square foot family room and bathroom, partially below grade, this property is located in the Sol Vista condominium complex and is in the medium-density residential zoning district and general plan area. Currently, the, it is a two-story condominium with kind of a large, what could be described as crawl space underneath, so the area, it can't really be properly defined as a basement or a floor because it's an unfinished space without really a floor or ceiling, so, the proposed application would essentially create a third story in an existing two-story building, according to the development standards for this zoning district, three levels are permitted on a building so long as it is above a certain grade, or, which is 14 degrees, the variance is requested along with the site plan review for the addition because the property grade is only 10 degrees, so technically variance would be required in order to allow the third level to be created, the proposed project besides the requirement for the third level meets all of the development standards for the zoning district for height, floor area, and setbacks for a three-story residence. So, it's an opinion of staff that the variance could be granted for a third-story build-out on this building, kind of based on three major points, one is that the proposed project would meet all other development standards in the zoning district for a three-level building, and it would not create any other non-conformities if the project was approved, second point would be that it would, creation of the third level would not create any additional nuisance or privacy issues for surrounding properties, it is a grade level addition, it will not create any like windows or doors or overlook any of the private spaces of the adjacent residences that are there currently, and the third point is that there are other units within the Sol Vista condominium community that have been previously granted approval for a third level addition, dig out underneath an existing unit, including, as an example, 87 Sol Vista, which is right next to the adjacent property, so therefore, approval of the variance would not grant the applicant any special privileges that are inconsistent with the existing development pattern within the community. The proposed project would be in conformance with the city's annual growth policy, as it will not be creating any additional bedrooms that would be, require a SoCal Edison water allocation, however, if the applicant chooses to pursue that in the future, staff has included a condition of approval in the resolution that would say that that conversion cannot be applied for until such a time as they get a well-serve letter from Edison confirming that a water allocation is available for them. Staff has also included findings for approval for site plan review and the variance within the staff report, the project is exempt from the requirement, or excluded from the requirement for coastal development permit, and findings for the reason for that have also been included in the staff report, so, with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt findings to support approval of the site plan review, adopt findings to support approval of the variance, find the project consistent with the 2023 growth policy, and find that the project qualifies for an exemption from SEQA as a Class 1 existing facilities project, draft resolution, site photographs of the existing property and plans have been included in the staff report for your review, and the applicant is also available for any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody up here have any questions of staff before we open a public hearing? All good? Open the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak for or against this matter, come forward now, state your name and address and tell us your piece. Can you swing it forward?
I just, I guess I do have one question for staff.
Okay.
So, this is, they're all over up at Sol Vista, does, is this considered an extra unit where a vehicle will be, can be, issued?
So, no, so the proposed addition is for the existing single-family residence, it'll be interconnected with the existing residence and doesn't, is not classified as a.
Not an address.
It will not have a separate address and is not classified as an ADU or a density bonus unit or anything like that, so, yeah, no, no additional parking is required by this project.
Okay.
Okay, no one came to speak on behalf of the public, so I want to close the public hearing.
Yes, sorry.
Public hearing is closed, any further discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the variance and the site plan with the nine listed staff definitions as conditions.
I second that motion.
Further discussion? Call for a vote.
Okay, Chairman Glass.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Commissioner Stae.
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
I need you to accuse myself of the next one, because I live across the street.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, item number three.
Okay, item number three is requesting a transit rental license and a coastal development permit to allow the renting or leasing of a room with or without table boards in a dwelling unit for periods of fewer than 30 consecutive days at 117 Beedaloo, the owner and applicant are EJ and Becky Tavella, and they are represented by Dave Zeller, who is in the audience, the property is located within the medium-density residential zone, and the property contains three bedrooms and two bathrooms, it is developed with a residential use consistent with the general plan and is allowed under the 2023 growth policy, the property manager for the unit is listed as Becky Tavella and the 24-hour contact is Dave Zeller, the subject property and all surrounding properties are developed with single and multi-residential units, the requested transit rental license does not involve any physical changes to the existing residence that would adversely affect or be materially detrimental to adjacent uses, buildings, and structures, the saturation, I'm sorry, that was wrong, the proposed project is categorically exempt under Section 15301 of the State SEQA Guidelines, Class 1 Existing Facilities, the project requires a coastal development permit under Section 9-8.102 B2V of Avalon Municipal Code, the project is not within the 300-foot appealable zone, city staff have not received any comments in favor or in opposition of the transit rental license, staff is recommending that you find the project categorically exempt under Section 15301 of the State SEQA Guidelines, Class 1 Existing Facilities, to support the approval of the coastal development permit, including that the project is not within the 300-foot appealable zone, and find that the application is allowed under the 2023 annual growth policy. That concludes my presentation, let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, anybody up here, if any questions of staff? And if I'm correct, we're going off of what was still in place when these were applied for, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so the moratorium has nothing to do with it.
It has no effect on these applications.
Okay.
Would this come with a golf cart?
They did not say that they were going to have a golf cart, they have the capability, they do have a covered off-street parking for a full-size and a golf cart, but that was not part of the application at the time.
So what happens if they just.
Is this considered a hill, like, because I know the flats aren't.
Beedaloo would be a hill.
It would, so this would be.
They would be able to have a golf cart.
Would they have to come back up here for that or not?
It's included?
It's not, it wouldn't be an asking for exemption, it's a permitted option for this location.
For that, that's the location to be permitted, okay, I just wanted to make that clarification.
Anybody else, questions of staff? Okay, we'll open the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come forward.
David Zeller, 5 Cabrillo Drive, and I represent EJ and Becky, on the property, I just wanted to add that they're a long-term island vacationing family, they've had a home on Catalina Street for 100 years that collectively they've outgrown that home, so their intent is to have this be their family home, overflow home, and when they're not here using it, they'd have the ability to rent it, and then also, a unique part of this property, it came with plans and water allocation for two ADU units in the back, and both of those do have parking and both have water allocation from Edison, and their intent is, within the next couple of years, to develop those and have those available for long-term island rentals, that's overall the package that they're trying to present here, and that's their long-term plan with that.
Any questions of the applicant? Thanks, Dave.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Anybody else wishing to speak? We'll close the public hearing, discussion. I see now the motion's been moved before.
Yeah, the findings, the findings support an approval. I'll make a motion, to, make a motion to approve conditional use permit with the findings recommended by staff plus conditions one through five.
And just to clarify, not a conditional use permit, a coastal.
A license.
Excuse me, a license.
No, for the.
Yeah.
Transit.
Transit rental license.
Just wanted to.
Thank you. That's very good.
I'll say.
Any further discussion, we've got first and a second.
Okay. Chairman Glass.
Aye.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Scott.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Commissioner Stae.
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
No.
Okay, six yes, one no, motion passes.
Okay.
He's just gonna go ahead and, he's gonna continue to September. Go ahead.
And Donna, can you just state the vote again for the record?
I'm sorry, oh, for the record, we have six yes and one no.
Okay, thank you.
Five yes, one no. Five yes, one no.
That is correct, I'll correct that, there's five yes and one no and one abstained.
I used my phone.
I turned my phone.
Okay, next item, item number four.
That was four.
Yeah, thank you Chair, so, item number four is the transit rental license and coastal development permit request for 215 Beacon Street Unit 2, the applicant, or the applicant is actually requesting that this project be continued to the September Planning Commission meeting, as they were not able to be here today, and they'd like to be present for the hearing, so, staff is recommending that the planning commission consider continuing this item to a date certain, which would be the September Planning Commission meeting.
Okay. So can I make a motion to move it to the date certain, September?
September 20th.
September 20th, with the next planning commission meeting? Do we have a second?
A second.
A second, Beth.
Okay, everybody's here, Chairman Glass.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Yes.
Commissioner Hewitt.
Yes.
Commissioner Stae.
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Aye.
Okay, so we have seven yeses to continue to 15 Beacon Number B, to September 20th. Next one is, item number five.
Okay.
Item number five is requesting a transit rental license and coastal development permit to allow the renting or leasing of a room with or without table boards in a dwelling unit for periods of fewer than 30 consecutive days duration at 69B Sol Vista, the owner and applicant are Fran Tablas and Annie McCauley, and they are not present today, they are unable to make it, the property is located in the medium-density residential zone, and the property is a studio with one bathroom, and is developed with a residential use consistent with the general plan and is allowed under the 2023 growth policy, the property manager for the unit is listed as Annie McCauley and Fran Tablas, and the 24-hour contact are Jessica and Carlos Hernandez, the subject property and all surrounding properties are developed with single and multi-residential units, the requested transit rental license does not involve any physical changes to the existing residence that would adversely affect or be materially detrimental to adjacent uses, buildings, and structures, the proposed exempt under Section 15301 of the State SEQA Guidelines, Class 1 Existing Facilities, the project requires a coastal development under Section 9-8.102 B2V of Avalon Municipal Code, and the project is not within the 300-foot appealable zone, city staff have not received any comments in favor or in opposition of the transit rental license, staff is recommending that the planning commission find the project categorically exempt under Section 15301 of the State SEQA Guidelines, Class 1 Existing Facilities, to support approval of the coastal development permit, including that the project is not within the 300-foot appealable zone, and find the application is allowable under the 2023 annual growth policy, that's my presentation, and let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions of staff?
But, does this unit come with a golf cart?
No.
Any others? Open the public hearing, applicant, anyone wishing to speak for or against?
I just have a brief couple of comments, I don't object to anybody, you know, requesting a short-term rental license for their home, I understand their need and respect that need for, you know, to obtain income to support the second home, but I, I question whether there should be owners with three, four, five, or more rental units, which essentially start operating a residential hotel, rather than just a income for their single dwelling, the city of San Diego took the step of limiting owners to one short-term rental unit, and they cannot have two, if they had a second one, they could rent it long-term, if they wished, and as many as they wanted long-term, I think considering all the requests for short-term rentals, whether the planning commission, the city of Avalon, should be considering discussing whether people who request multiple short-term rental units should be brought into a different category, or at least under, be thought of in a different way than people asking just for a short-term rental for the one dwelling they use as a second home, secondly, I wanted to make responsive comments to the, that were made last, last meeting when I was here, I did review the coastal commission documents, and Hamilton Cove has no documents, no requirement for short-term rentals, Lifetime Communities was one of the early developments, Lifetime Communities of Catalina, and they had requested that 50% of the planned 161 units, 80 units be short-term rentals, but there was never any approval or confirmation of this in any way, so, the, over a period of time, of course, the, there, the planning commission has approved so many rental units, there are now about 70% of the units at Hamilton Cove are, are short-term rental units, so, this has led, one of the commissioners' last meetings saying that, oh, well, I've always thought of it as a hotel anyway. always thought of it as a hotel anyway. And indeed, the, several federal, national agencies, Federal Housing Commission and four other national entities have said, yes, Hamilton Cove is a condo hotel. However, our chairman or head of the HOA Board, as Adam Lee says at Hamilton Cove, is a recreational residential community, or at least it should be. So, I just point out that I don't think the planning commission has helped the HOA, HOA Board Chairman to really stick to that position with all the approvals that have Thirdly, at the May, at the May Planning Commission meeting, there was one long-term resident stated, no one's living here anymore, it's all rental units. Since there's been a minimal increase in housing units in Avalon over the last couple of decades, an increasing number of short-term rental units does decrease the number available for long-term rental, and therefore decrease the number of residents in Avalon. With a stagnant or shrinking population, it'll become difficult for Avalon to support public schools, the medical center, and other community institutions. And we all know that increasingly, workers and teachers must commute from mainland because they can't, there's no available housing, and no housing they can afford. So, most importantly, residents are needed to create a community, a community with a sense of purpose. So, I think the planning commission and working with the city council will need to imagine a broader vision for Avalon, one that perhaps looks at the diversity of enterprise, it's not just tourism in the city, so that people can be residents. I don't have any specific personal interest in these issues, except I'd like to see the quality of life in the community of Avalon remain attractive to its residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can say also, this unit that's up right now, they do have a long-term rental upstairs as well, that they rent to islanders, long-term year-round rental.
Anybody else wish to speak on this matter?
Hi, my name's Susanna Gutierrez. I live at 139 Whitley Avenue, number one. And the only comment I wanted to make is, when comparing the staff report to the variance staff report, the variance includes site plan review, and staff typically hasn't included this in any of the transient rental license applications, even though by issuing a coastal development permit, the municipal code requires site plan review findings to be approved as well. So, I'd like to request that this application be continued until we can consider those findings. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing. Discussion.
Does this applicant have any other TRLs?
No, they don't. They have a long-term rental in the same building upstairs.
Yeah, I understood that. I just wanted to know about a separate property.
No, and they don't.
Anything else? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it with the staff, listed recommendations.
I'll say.
Okay. Chairman Glass?
Aye.
Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Can I add that there's, I mean, I don't know if there's already a thing in Solvista saying that you can't get a golf cart, but there is a separate address for this one. Can we stipulate that there's no golf cart allowed?
That'd be fine. Agree. Everybody?
Okay. Yeah. Do you want to make a new motion, or?
Yeah, I'll add that to the motion.
Okay.
That there's a condition, no golf cart.
No golf cart could be granted to it.
Got it. Okay. Commissioner Glass?
Aye.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Say?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes, with a lot of reservations.
Okay, so that's seven yeses on the record, Scott. Motion passes.
Okay. Item number six.
Thank you Chair. Six item on the agenda this evening is a transient rental license and coastal development permit request for the property at 211 Mar del Cortez. The applicant is requesting that this item be continued to a date uncertain, as they are currently working through some building permitting and permanent power electrical service to the building, so they would like to continue this item for consideration at a later date, once they're able to work through those issues. So, staff is requesting that you would continue this item to a date uncertain.
Okay. Anyone want to make that motion? So moved? That's basically staff's recommendation. Definitely moved.
I'll say.
Second, Bob.
Okay. Chairman Glass?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Yes.
Commissioner Hewitt?
Yes.
Commissioner Say?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Commissioner Romero?
Aye.
Okay, that is seven yeses, Scott.
Great, thank you. And can we take a brief, three-minute recess? Would that be okay with everyone?
Sure. Sure.
Yeah. I think.
I just wanted to, oh, but did they have to?
Same word.
I, I wanted to just quickly-
Okay. Okay. Take a recess for three minutes?
Meeting back up. I wanted to make a comment. Last week when we spoke about the CUPs, I was in the audience, I happened to have, well, transient rental licenses, I happened to have a CUP. My comments were as a member of the public, not as a commissioner, and that's why I abstained from the meeting, from sitting up here with you all. Other than that, there's nothing else in this one, so we say goodnight to Tony.
Okay. Before, can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. As planning commission anything knows now, council on August 1st passed a moratorium regarding short-term rentals, so the only ones that will be coming before you were those that were filed prior to August 1st. And I just want to give planning commission a heads-up of where we're going next, okay? That being, next Tuesday, August 22nd at 6:00 PM, we'll be holding a stakeholders' meeting here, public forum, anybody and everybody is invited. We're looking for public comment from, from everyone. We're gonna try to compile as many suggestions, as many other issues as we can address. And we're gonna hold another one the following week, on August 30th at 6:00 PM, same public forum. And we're trying to find a Saturday date to try to accommodate people that aren't available during the week. So, we'll get that publicized and put it on the city website as soon as we can. We're also, in September, we will be releasing a survey, both online and through the city website, and paper forum, to get as much community input as we can regarding specific questions we have regarding short-term rentals. Our goal at that time is to compile all that information and try to synthesize it in some manner and reduce it in some manner, so we can work with Kelly and I and legal counsel to try to present, A, the issues, the most common issues that we're trying to correct, and then maybe common sense legislation that will fix those issues. And at that time, we'll be looking to come back to both planning and, planning commission and council, where I'm sure we'll have more debate. Our 45-day initial moratorium runs approximately September 14th, so if we run into time, we'll be asking council in early September to extend that moratorium if needed, but we need to try to accommodate as much as we can between now and then. So, I would invite all the planning commission, if you're able to attend either one or both of those meetings, you're certainly eligible to participate as a resident. We decided we, to run this as a forum through the city, I'll really be moderating it, but it, it's, it's the public forum, not so much us steering it. We want to hear from everybody, and we're just gonna be note-takers on this and try to compile all the information we can. We have residents that come up and suggest ideas, and they're great ideas, and, and we know we have the problems, we just are looking for ways to fix them. So, you know, hopefully, we'll reach out to the residents and say, you know, come with all your suggestions, everyone's a good one, and we'll, we'll work through it, so. That's just to give you guys a heads-up, that's where we're going.
And do you have access to the long laundry list of recommendations we once gave the city council?
We do.
Okay.
Not only do we have those-
We studied this at great length, and had very little input from the community. We identified, you know, the strengths and weaknesses of all of the various plans, gave them a list of ideas, of concept, and they approved one, the case rental license.
Right.
So, that would be helpful.
Which was a big one.
It was a big one.
It was a big step. It was a big step. I'm not complaining about it at all. But there were some others that kind of fell through the cracks that I think would have solved a lot of the issues that we're hearing from, say, some of those at Hamilton and elsewhere, so.
Correct. And just to let you know, we have had requests from some council members to send them those videos and the highlights of those meetings from a couple of years ago, so we have-
Highlight reel. Highlight reel, really?
Yeah. We tag those and forward them.
Okay.
Will those meetings be televised, the one next weekend?
Yes.
So, we can watch it online if we can't make it?
We're gonna televise it, we're gonna, and we're trying to work through, in order to open it up as much as possible, we're trying to, if I can figure it out, to have Zoom participation on it, not just Zoom watching. So, we'll do that, and then the survey will go out in English and Spanish when we, when we get that out and released. We just, we have another income survey that's in the works in August, and we didn't want to have multiple surveys at the same time, it'd create confusion, so we're gonna wait until September to release this survey. But thank you for all your, we've kept track of everybody here's input, every, we've reviewed the planning commission meetings of everybody that's made suggestions and created our list. So, we do have a list of everyone that's been made so far.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah. Okay, no further ado. Say goodnight to Tony.
Goodnight, Tony.
Good night, Tony. You adjourn.